Hey, you're good to go, Pat.
Just so everybody's connecting, so I just want to make sure they're on. So, Mrs. DeVoe, it looks like a lot of, it looks like everybody's in, correct? My, my computer keeps showing connecting. Do you think the public is all in? Mr. DeVoe?
She's on mute.
She's on mute.
There's 18 people in here, so I think everybody's in.
Jennifer, you're muted?
You're muted.
Yes, everybody's in and nobody's connecting on my end. They all look connected, so.
Okay. Alright, so being Wednesday, January 5th at 6:30 PM, I'll open the planning board meeting. And the form, we have a notice to read tonight. Based on the town manager's executive order, the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance, so the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded, and within 48 hours, we'll post the length of the recording on the town of Bridgewater's website and social media page. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board participating remotely. I'm Patrick Driscoll, Chair. Mr. Raymond Gemmian. Mrs. Jean Guerino, the Clerk. Mr. Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair. Mr. Stephen Geller. And we have two associate members with us this evening. Ms. Astrid Rojas and Mrs. Julia Santacangelo. During the meeting, all votes of the board will be taken to roll calls. The following Bridgewater Town staff will be participating remotely as well. Mrs. Jennifer DeVoe, the Community and Economic Development Director. Mr. Greg Tansey, the Town Engineer. I believe that's it for staff, correct, Mrs. DeVoe? At this time, everyone's muted. At this time, everybody's mic is muted. The board's mic should be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address and your question. The chair will recognize, or in this case, Mrs. DeVoe is going to be the host. She'll recognize all questions in order. You can use the Raise My Hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the chair or the host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking any questions. If you're on the phone, you can dial the star nine to raise your hand. So, first, order of business, we have the call to order, which we did. We have two public hearings this evening. The way the public hearings will work is we'll invite the project's representatives to, to present the project. We'll then ask the, the board for any good questions or clarification questions to the staff and the applicant. We'll then open it up for public comment, and that's when you can raise your hand or put your name in the chat feature. And again, just state your name and address before asking a question. And then, that's how the public hearings will go, and then we have a couple of public meetings. So, with that being said, I'll open up the first public hearing we have this evening, which is 31 Perkins Street. This is the store space site plan review. This is DeVoe, do we have the public hearing notice?
Um, I know, I'm sorry, I did not know we read that correctly. Hold on.
Do we have the green, do we have the certified mailings and all that?
We've been out of the office, so Larry or Rebecca, did you guys have the green cards?
I am checking our files right now. Give me a moment.
Thank you.
The hearing was posted as well as advertised, correct?
That is correct. I just have to pull up the ad from our file. I was not prepared for that. I'm doing triple duty tonight, so.
I believe the notifications were done by the town, so we don't have any of them.
Okay.
Oh wait, that's for zoning. Hang on, sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say normally you don't.
There's too many, there's too many files in here.
I have the legal notice, Pat. I can read that if you'd like.
All right, this is Baptiste looking for that. We could read that public hearing notice.
Bridgewater Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. On Wednesday, January 5th, 2022, at 6:30 PM, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing via Zoom on application by store space for a minor site plan proposed at 31 Perkins Street, Bridgewater, Sessos Map 21, Lot 141. The applicant proposes to rehabilitate and modify the existing self-storage building. The plans are prepared with civil engineering and are on file in the Office of the Town Clerk and the Community and Economic Development Department. All interested persons are encouraged to attend Bridgewater Planning Board, advertised on December 22nd and December 29th.
Mrs. Baptiste, do you have the, the green card notifications?
I'm still trying to make sure that we have them. All right, let me make sure it's the right ones. West Bridgewater Planning Board, I believe this is them. So yes, let me forward them to you.
What's the date on those, Rebecca?
That's what I'm looking for. Maybe, maybe these aren't the latest ones. April. This is the other zoning. Nope. That's the first one.
I have the hot file here, and I have a pile of them in here.
April would be the first zoning board.
That was, that was a special one, wasn't it, no?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's the ones I have, too. I'm gonna make a phone call. One moment. Can I have your phone?
Mr. Chairman, maybe it'd be wise to delay this another time on the agenda and take up 990 South Street now.
I hope that Mr. Silver is.
And, and we're gonna need the green cards for that one as well.
It takes stuff out of order, but I think Mr. Silver has all three, so.
He does.
They may be sitting on Ashley's desk, not signed, and that is why we do not have them in our computer to share with you.
Not signed means they didn't go out, or?
No, no, no. She didn't scan them so that we could share them with you. Their green cards are sitting on the desk at the office, and neither Larry nor I are at the office to do that at the moment.
Are we pretty sure the notices went out?
I mean, I got an email from Ashley asking me when the date was so she could send the notices out. That's the extent of my knowledge on this subject.
I mean, I watched your stuff on, that doesn't go much for proof, but yes, they went out. I'll see if I can find some other way to prove it.
Are there any others on that we can ask? Did they receive that?
Nobody's raising their hands, so. Rebecca, I assume that's gonna be the same for the 1998 South Street as well?
Yep. Yeah, they're in a pile, she says on her desk. I can check our stamps.com and try to show you that we paid postage for it, so I don't know if that satisfies anybody, but I'm trying to see if I can do that.
That's up to the board.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I think we probably should reschedule both.
Oh, there's a, there's a gentleman.
Yeah, if I might, this is Arthur Leach, 38 Harvest Lane. I have in front of me a certified letter relative to 1998 South Street, if that's what you folks are looking for. So, I think this provides evidence that those letters went out for 1998 South Street.
Thank you.
Is there, Jennifer, is there someone there that could vouch for the ones on Perkins Street?
We've asked, nobody has raised their hand or come forward, so.
This is Jim Candido, 37 Stetson Street. I see notification for 31 Perkins Street.
You did?
Thank you, sir.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyce, feel comfortable with the green? Mr. Gemmian? Can anybody hear me, Mr. Gemmian?
I hear you. I'm just thinking, this is kind of irregular to go by the fact that there are two people that have received notices.
This whole process is irregular.
Yeah, if I might.
Well, you know, you know, you know what we could do, you know what we could do? Why don't we do this? Why don't we move forward because one of them needs to go to ZBA for relief anyway? And, and the other one, we need to talk about, you know, we need to talk about both of them, so. Why don't we get the ball rolling? If we find out there's an issue, we can, we can continue with this to the next meeting, if you want. Well, let's get it all planned and get it right, we can. And then, in the meantime, and then, Mr. Chair, we're getting a lot of feedback from you. Go ahead, Mr. Geller.
A lot of feedback, right?
Yeah, I can't hear anything.
I try now. Usually, it's Larry's.
Okay. You know, a lot of times. We ran into the situation, we had to redo the public hearing because it wasn't properly notified, but we can assume with two people that, that the notifications went out. We don't have to close the hearings tonight. We can get them started and, and not close them and make a decision, and that, if there's an issue, we can correct it at the next meeting. If not, we can just close them and vote at the next meeting. Is that the best way? Does Boyd feel comfortable with that?
My only issue is that two people acknowledging they received the notification, it does not mean that everybody that was supposed to did. You know what I mean? But I.
Well, the requirement isn't that people receive the notification. The requirement is that they get mailed out, so. Arguably, if the two people received them, they were mailed out.
Well, all that proves is that those two people had them mailed out to them, is what I, what I mean.
I do have stamps.com saying a majority of them were delivered. Our recipient action delivered in transit, sent back. I, I do have a receipt of all of them that they were delivered.
Okay, can you provide that?
Can, can you email that to me?
I will summarize this somehow. Maybe it's just a screenshot we'll do for now.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, I'll do that right now. Give me a moment while I juggle.
And if the board wants, we can keep both hearing. We're gonna have to keep one of them open anyway, but we can keep both hearings open at the next meeting. Any objections to moving forward with the public hearings from the board?
I'll keep the process moving.
Mr. McDonald, Mr. Gemmian, are you okay with both sides based on the receipt that you're favoring?
We have, we have one person received it for Perkins and once one person received it for South Street. And that probably indicates that other people that were sent to other people also, but still irregular. I'll go along with it, but the hearings, I won't vote on the hearing tonight. It would have to be kept open, both of them.
Good.
I agree with you on that, yeah.
I guess it was gonna move, I'm trying to get the ball wrong, I'm getting it wrong. And then, we have Mr. Attorney Bobrowski next week. Maybe we can just wrap these up. One of them might not even be ready to come back, and then the other one, we can wrap up with the next meeting. Okay, so let's continue with 31 Perkins Street. We've read the, the public hearing notice. We received some proof that they're mailed out from Mr. Baptiste. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Silver.
Good evening. I can assure you that they had been sent out, but I know that that isn't comforting to everybody. So this is this, the site, which was the old Walkover Shoe site, which we came before you in April and secured a special permit in order to expand the existing use as a, as a self-storage facility. And at that time, what we had told you that we were looking to do was to expand the building by replacing the back section closest to the railroad tracks and expand that to be a four-story structure. So the light gray section that you see there is going to be the replacement buildings. And the one out, the darker gray is the existing building that is there today. With the exception, this is the site plan showing a portion of that building being removed, which is where the office area shows in the, in the center there, where you see the yellow kind of striping area. So, I don't know, can you see the, can you just go back to the existing conditions one? For a second, so I can just show them that part of it?
One moment. Yay, here we go.
Okay, so as I'm saying, as you can see that in that section where the cursor is right now, that's an area of the building that will be removed and replaced with a smaller bump out of the office area. The rest of that brownish-gray kind of structure is going to remain, but be basically upgraded in terms of its appearance. And the rear of it, which is light right now, and this I'm drawing is like white almost. That's where that, the two-story structures are going to become four-story structure, a new structure on that side. So that is, that's the plan that we brought to you and got approved for the special permit back in April. So now, what we've done is presented to you a site plan for what the improvements will look like, and we've also presented architectural plans as to what the visual will be. So in this case, here, the way it's gonna function is pretty much that the office sits right in the center. This parking that'll be in the front of that, of that section right there, including a handicap spot there. And then, to the, to the left or to the north, there are also additional spaces on the others closer to Pearl Street, right in that area there. And you can see that striped area is an area for, there's a loading section, a loading area. And there's also an area that's striped out for access to the entrance doors to the elevator area within the storage building. The actual entrance to the office itself is on the Perkins face of the building. So, what we have here is also to the, to the Pearl Street side, there is an old loading dock which is on that face of the building that is being replaced with a, a smaller, a smaller loading area. Originally on the plan that we submitted to you, it showed one coming in pretty steeply from Pearl Street. The architect is asked that we revise that to have just an eight-foot wide access to a landing area where we had the loading dock. So it's actually a little bit better for that area in terms of making that area work. And we will have that on the revised plan that we forward, which also addresses comments that were brought forth by the town engineer. So as far as the, the building itself, not too much is changing as far as overall footprint. Its footprint is slightly smaller than it was. It's slightly less impervious area with this site plan than what is currently there. But there's pretty much a lot of asphalt and building on the site. It was pretty much what maxed out during the 100 years that it operated in the, in the man that it did. So what we have, we have also done here is, and there were some questions about it, I guess, but Perkins is a one-way towards the, towards the north. And so, that driveway that's on Perkins is an exit only. Okay, and that is after you circle around from Pearl Street where the entrance is. You would come in and you could either park in those spaces that are on that side, or if you're going to the loading door, there's a loading area right there to be able to pull up and back into it. The other spaces that are shown for parking, you do pull directly off of Perkins Street into them. And behind them is a dumpster area which has been added to the plan to make that clearer as to where, you know, trash and so forth would be placed. And there was also on the, on the plan as we presented it to you, we did show some parking in the, behind the building. But after consulting with Angelo DiMilia, who, who sold, sold this building, he has indicated that the, the easements, the access easement that's in that area prohibits any parking other than live parking to be put in that back area. So cars can park in that back area, but it has to be just live parking. You can't just leave a vehicle there and go elsewhere. So we do have a reduction in parking on that side. We have tried to compensate for it a little bit by adding one more space in the front and then two on the side. So of the seven, I think we recovered three of the seven in, in terms of some of these adjustments that we've made to the site plan. We had, we did receive a, a review letter from the town engineers to Tansey. We have been trying to address all the issues that he had identified. And, and this, with the plan that you're looking at right here, is one that is basically a modification to the one we submitted to you with some of those comments addressed. But he has not seen it, nor has the board. So that'll have to be reviewed in order to be able to satisfy his comments. I would want to point out, though, on some of the comments that he had presented, I just wanted to clarify that he made reference, Greg made reference to a section related to drainage, which really applies to subdivisions, not to site plans. So, the, there is no provision or no requirement in the town's bylaws for drainage on this site because it's disturbance less than an acre. So it doesn't fall under Section 17 of the zoning bylaw. And it's a redevelopment project, but it does fall under the DEP storm order as a, as a project in which you need to sort of comply to the maximum extent possible. Now, there's not a lot we can do here for drainage. First of all, there's an, the area behind the building is an activity use limitation area in which there was known contamination that was in the soils. It was cleaned up to a certain level. And then, a restriction was put on it that that's an area that cannot be used for certain things, and it's supposed to stay paved. And it, one of the things that you would not be able to do in that area is infiltrate groundwater, for example, or roof, roof water into the, into the ground there. The fact with this site being over 100 years old in terms of its industrial use, infiltration of any kind of stormwater is really not, not advised. Because even though the discovery for some sort of minor contaminants was to the backside of the building, that could be the same case in other areas. The best way to deal with a site like this is to have it remain capped as, as much as possible. And so, we do not provide for any kind of groundwater infiltration. Greg has asked that we do scour, scour control on the drains that come off the roof. And we have incorporated his comment into a slight change in the site design in which we're taking those roof drains around the corner to the Pearl Street side to a manhole and then down along the ramp and then to a, a stone plunge pool, if you, if you call it that, or a scour basin in order to make sure that the, any energy in the water is taken out before it finds its way over to the drainage basin or the drainage channel that's on the MBTA property. That's pretty much an overview of the, of the issues. We, we feel as though we need to just tighten up the changes and resubmit it to the board or to the town engineer and the board for you to be able to be able to approve a site plan on this property. We don't feel that it's there tonight, but we do feel as though we would have everything all set for, for your next meeting in order to be able to wrap this up. But I'd be willing to answer whatever questions the board may have or any of the others.
At this time, I'll have questions, Mr. Silver. Or Mr. Tansey? We also got a letter from the council about three day questions. The correspondence we received.
Pat, you're, Pat, you're, it's really hard to hear you.
We need Mr. Silver?
I just did, yeah.
Didn't you maybe go there now or not?
A little bit better.
So, the first one, Mr. Silver, is the catwalks. On the first plan, they show like they remain. The second plan, they removed. Is that correct?
Yes. That is true.
How about render, how about renderings from the Perkins side? We have architects from the train tracks, but not from the Perkins Street? Are those available? Are those available?
Well, we 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 have an illustration of Rebecca, can you bring that up? Those, the plans, there's also a visual there, there it is right there. As you can see, one of the, one of the items that was taken into account here is the architect has has removed any of those exterior stairways. And I think that was something, I think that was something that the board wanted and that has been incorporated. So that'll be shown on the change.
So landscaping, is there any landscaping?
There's really, there really isn't any areas per se for landscaping. There are, there is an area that, next to the dumpster area, that will be a lawn area. And then there'll be in front of the parking spaces closest to Pearl Street, there'll be a grass strip in that area as well. There really isn't, and there really aren't any areas that lend themselves the landscape. And this is a site that's been pretty well maxed out. There's a little triangle up on Pearl Street side near the loading dock over there. But it's really simply simply just grass areas. It's really not a heavily landscaped site at all.
So my last question, the radius, the first radius is coming from Perkins Street to Pearl Street. It looks like it's showing as Cape Cod burn, but then the other radius is shown as vertical granite. I don't know if that was upgraded in this plan. Shouldn't both those radiuses be vertical granite coming off the right away?
I think Rebecca might be able to answer that question better than I could right now.
So that that one that we do right now is vertical granite, and then it goes into Cape Cod burn?
On the property itself.
If you go to the other side, go down, no, the other way, the other way.
We got rid of that curbing.
You removed that radius?
I got rid of the curbing all on the front here for access purposes. The curbing, we're going to keep it paved and there's no curbing now around the parking area. Did you want to see what it was before? I can pull it up.
Yeah, I think before.
There was, there was curbing, yep. And I removed the curbing and we're just going to paint the stripes instead. This is a sidewalk. If we had the curb, we'd be, we'd be cutting out the sidewalk. And so now this will just be, this is the outline of what was existing building. It will now be paved so that we can fit the dumpsters. And then we'll just stripe the painting and then grades will go from towards the street. It'll be up high over here and gray towards the street.
As it does.
Can we mute Mr. Silver again? Any other board comments from staff or Mr. Silver?
Just, just one, where's the snow going to go?
In those lawn areas.
I I don't want to be facetious here, but it's going to go in the same place that it's gone for the last hundred years. Basically, in in the areas adjacent to the building. And there's really not a lot of places to start otherwise. If it becomes a problem with operation, then they have to truck it offsite. If it if it becomes a a problem with having access for the customers. These are difficult sites when they're old industrial sites that are pretty well maxed out.
Mr. Jimmy, do you have any other questions?
No, not right now.
If the board, if there are no more board questions, I can open it to the public.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, though, I just wanted to point out that today the board did receive a letter from the health agent. I didn't know if you, I had emailed that to the board today. Did you get a chance to look at that? Did you want me to read that? Do you want to read that into the record?
Sure, we can read that to the record if you have it for me.
Yep. So it's dated January fourth, twenty twenty-two. Stairzoning Board of Appeals, planning board. The Health Department has received the application for a minor site plan at thirty-one Perkins Street by Lawrence P. Silva, dated eleven twenty-two, twenty-one, sheets one through three. After reviewing the plan, it appears this would be for a proposed reconstruction of an existing four-story building and also include incorporating a smaller building section for additional storage area. The site would have town sewers, so at this time I have no additional comments to offer. Sincerely, Eric J. Badger, Health.
Last, any board comments? Any public comments of anybody from the public that'd like to speak on the project?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, I I have one. Is there a detail on what the guardrail looks like?
I haven't had a moment to add the details. That would be on the revised plans.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Gill, any more questions? Any, any public comment?
We have another question from Carlton.
Hi. I'm I'm getting echo on myself here, but anyway, I just have a question. That lot is split between the central business district and industrial one, I believe. How do we handle that? Shouldn't we just rezone that whole area for either central business district or industrial?
I think it can allow use in both, isn't it? And you can also, Carlton, you can also use thirty feet into each zone as we have that provision in the bylaw.
I I appreciate, thank you. I didn't realize that was the case. But I think there's other economic developments that could go there that could be more beneficial to the town. But I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Do we have any other public?
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, sir.
Jim Candido, thirty-seven Stetson Street. I have a couple of just miscellaneous comments I want to make right now. My first comment actually falls into what the gentleman before me stated about the zones. I was curious whether or not the old walkover was in one zone or multiple zones. I know the foundry is in two zones and you're trying to put it into one. My property on Stetson Street is also in two zones, and I can't get an answer from the town on what they're going to do about it. So you're saying that the walkover factory is in one zone?
Mr. Bob Graham or Mr. Tansy, do you want to take that?
Um, no, the the factory itself, I believe, is split zone between central business and industrial B.
Okay, so it's like my property.
I'm not sure where your property is, sir, so I don't know.
But Mr. Candido, I think that the use is allowed in both zones. And our ordinance says that you can use thirty feet into either zone for that use. So if you had one, if if your lot was split, you could go thirty feet in either direction with that zoning. And I think, I think, I think it's, I think this use, the storage uses a lot in both zones.
It is.
Good. Well, bodies will be interested in that info. Thank you. Couple more comments. During, I I'm happy, first of all, for this project to clean up that area and make it brighter and cleaner. So that's a positive. I do want to just make a comment on keeping the trucks for the construction site renovation to Perkins Street and to Pearl Street, like up and down Stetson Street. Another comment is hours of operation. And will there be a resident living on site? And what is going to be done for noise, lights, and hours, hours? And I don't have the sketches in front of me that were mentioned by Mr. Silva, but the dumpster hopefully is in the back of the building on the railroad track side. So we don't have to look at it as we do with all the trash barrels for all the lodging houses on Stetson Street. And hopefully, besides putting it behind the building, it is also enclosed. One second. And I also want to just make one other comment, and then you can comment on responses to my end. Is, I think it would be a great idea for the town, the planning department, the town manager, the builder, the new owner of the storage facility, the new owner proposed for the Perkins facility, to work with the town and the MBTA and to put the railroad tracks underneath the the existing tracks for the crossing on Bedford Street and Pleasant Street down by the college. I think that would be a plus for the community. It would eliminate noise, it would eliminate traffic. And I think that's where the focus should be put on instead of all the buildings. And, you know, you're talking about apartments being built over on the Perkins property. They're going to have to put up with all these train whistles at least fifteen a day. And that's going to increase by another ten or fifteen when they put tracks further south. So I think that's something that I've brought up over the last ten years. The town of Hingham is always forward-thinking, and I'd like to see Bridgewater at least make a step in that direction, some forward thinking. That's my only comments for now. Thank you.
Mr. Silver, is there a current residence in this property now?
Not to my knowledge, no. There's not a, it's not a occupied storage facility.
And in these architectural plans, is there a residential unit or anything like that? Is that correct?
I I could not hear what you said.
And in these new plans, there's no, there's no plans for a residential unit?
No, the floor plans are right there. You can see there's an office and then there's just storage units.
You know where the dumpster is on the site and how it screams, please?
As far as the dumpster, we do have it on the front side, but it's behind the parking spaces. And we can have that enclosed. My fear would be is if we put it in the back where Mr. Candido was asking for us to be put, I I think it's kind of, it would be so remote that I don't think that it would be utilized properly. I think that what would happen is people would not walk all the way around to the backside to utilize it. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. We we will, we will make sure that it's a fenced-in one, that you, I will show you the detail for that on that revised plan.
You have to repeat that, Pat, sorry. To the current owners?
To the current hours.
I I don't know if in what we submitted to you from from Safe Store, whether or not they actually identified the hours. I believe it goes from, I think it's like six and six, but I I could be wrong. I will, I will make sure that we specify that in the response to you. I have to get that from them to be clear as to how, because they've been operating there. So I'll have to get, be clear as to what they propose to do in terms of hours and whether or not it changes with seasons. I I I apologize, but I cannot hear you at all.
He said a lighting plan.
Not a lighting plan. We have provided for details of the lights that we are proposing for the for the building itself. There is a detail that shows them, we asked them about lighting as far as whether or not it would extend beyond the limits of the property. They indicated it would not, it would be down shielded in order to not allow for that. I do need to know, though, if it's going to be required to have a photometric, that I will have to ask them to provide one before the meeting.
Um, for the, right, this site, because it's a redevelopment, I don't think it's necessary, but it's up to the board.
You know, it's not uncommon for an architect to provide a spec on the type of exterior lighting that they're proposing.
Correct.
So could we get that, Mr. Silver?
I, yes, I believe that we may have a detail on the plan. Rebecca, is that there?
I I don't think I put it on the plan. I called out in the narrative that was provided, I believe.
Oh, the type of fixture it was, right? All right, we will, we will make sure that the architect provides for it and also a statement about its projection.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think that that's very important, that we we would need to know how far these lights are projecting beyond the building itself. That's important.
Yes, especially with there being residential properties nearby.
Exactly.
Mr. Silver, I know you have a black light of most sides, one side, could you provide a colored rendering of the entire structure?
Are you muted?
So you want, you want a colored rendering like the one we provided for the backside?
Correct. I think that's what you, and your comments was to the board, I think that's what you're looking for, correct?
Well, I just noted that they only provided it for the backside and didn't know if the board wanted it for the front side as well.
If we could get that, I think that's helpful, especially since it does blend in with the residential area, Mr. Silver.
Okay. It is going to be the same treatment, but if you want it shown on the plan, then we'll have to tell them that they need to give us that elevation.
Are there any other board comments or public comments at this point?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Jim Candido, one more quick comment. If Mr. Silva can signage or lighted signage on the property.
Mr. Silver, I see a sign location, right?
Yes, they have, they have a separate sign company that was to provide me with a detail for that sign. They have not provided it to me except to say that it was going to be similar to one of the other Safe Store ones that they've done. But they were working on one that was specific to this location. I will make sure that that is provided. It's an internally lit sign. And it's, and it's in the position that we show it on the site plan.
Okay, any more public comment? More comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, is there an existing dumpster on site now?
Not that I saw.
Well, according, okay, so in that case, if you look at the plan, there's two, there's two loading docks front and there's two loading docks back. So they consider taking one of the loading docks around the setback to build. Or in the new plan, did they get rid of one of those loading docks on the back of Pearl, off of Pearl Street?
The loading docks off of the four-story storage over here have been removed. It's just going to be parking with a ramp and access through doors. We got rid of the overheads proposed. I believe that's what you were looking for.
Yeah, because the plans still show two overheads, the ones that I have.
No, it's, that has been removed. It's a regular entrance door.
Okay. And I, I'd almost like to see a full of, uh, street trees in some of those planted areas where it's wide. Not just, not just all grass.
Yeah, that's, I would echo that, Mr. Geller. I, I think some street trees and some plantings would also help the building. I like the rendering they show with all the plantings on the railroad track side, but I think that's not going to happen, right, Mr. Silver?
Not on the railroad side. There's no room on the railroad side. We had to pull the building in.
If we can incorporate some street trees, I think that'd be great in those areas like Mr. Geller said.
Absolutely. That would be, that would at least make that look better on that side, on the two sides. Right on that corner. I, I might be able to get, uh, a couple, uh, next to the dumpster area too.
To continue this anyway for ZBA and for revised plans, so. Any, any additional comments from anybody? Okay, um, so Mr. DeBoeran, this goes to ZBA next week, next Wednesday?
I believe that's correct, yes.
And assuming they, assuming they vote favorably, it would be a twenty-day appeal period after that?
That's correct.
Assuming the, letting the decision gets filed right away?
Yes, it will.
So do we want to go to the first meeting in February?
It's, uh, your call. At the moment, all you have on that meeting is the present master plan presentation by Barrett Planning Group. It's February second.
Does that, I don't even think February second, does that even work math-wise? So if we have, today's the, today is the fifth?
No.
So you had, and seven days, that's the twelfth. Twenty days after that's the third, yeah, that would work, right?
Yeah, it's, it would, I would have to file it that following day for it to be twenty days.
Assuming they make a decision that night?
Yeah.
So we can, we can always continue it if we have to, right?
Yeah, and I mean, I, I think, yeah, I mean, I think you schedule it and then we see where we're at and you, you can typically tell if there's nobody at the ZBA hearing, it's unlikely that they'll be in a field.
So moved.
Let's add to February second at six thirty?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Is that Mr. Geller?
Yep.
Oh, I'm, oh, all right, so I'm sorry. So I, we have to roll call. I'm just, I'm screwed up. All right, so, um, if there's no discussion, uh, Mr. Gemma?
Yes.
Mrs. Garina?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
All right, sounds good. So let's February.
February second.
The event is that I hear that will not be re-notified. It's just, we're continuing tonight to February second at six thirty. All right, so, um, next on the agenda, um, we have another public hearing. This hearing's a nineteen ninety-eight South Street. This is an application by Slate Rock Realty Trust. It's a definitive subdivision plan. Um, Mr. DeBoeran, do we have the public hearing notice?
Give me one second. Okay. Daughter Planning Board Public Hearing Notice on Wednesday, January fifth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM. The planning board will conduct a public hearing via Zoom on an application by Slate Rock Farms for a definitive subdivision proposed at nineteen ninety-eight South Street, Bridgewater, Sessors Map one twenty-five lot sixteen. The applicant proposes to create three buildable lots from one existing lot with one additional drainage lot created. The plans are prepared by Silva Engineering and are on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and the Community Economic Development Department. All interested persons are encouraged to attend Bridgewater Planning Board to be advertised on December twenty-second and December twenty-ninth.
So, what was my? And then we have, we're going to assume we have the green cards because we got the, um, the stamps, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Silver and Mr. Baptiste.
I, I, I don't know, is this, are you still getting feedback when I'm talking now?
When you talk, it's fine. It's when you don't talk and somebody else is talking and you're not muted.
Oh, okay.
So that's why when you, when you stop talking, I mute you.
So don't encourage me to say that I should be talking more, but that's okay. So this is nineteen ninety-eight South Street. Uh, this was a, um, um, the subject of a variance request uh, that the zoning board of appeals granted a frontage variance on lot, on the lot, uh, the third lot, the one to the left, a lot, lot, um,
Number two.
Yeah, I can't read it up there now. Three?
Two.
Two.
Two. Okay. So that was the one that was, uh, subject of a, uh, variance. The variance was, uh, granted, um, but because of the way that the regulations, um, work in Massachusetts, uh, a frontage, uh, variance doesn't stand by itself. It also requires that the planning board grant a waiver of frontage, um, which coincides with what the zoning board, um, issued in order for the lot to be, uh, legal and, um, and buildable. Um, so what we have, I submitted a letter dated November twenty-second. And basically what that letter, uh, outlines is that, um, that, that we're able to, the lot area, if R exceeds the minimum requirements for three house lots in the residential AV district, however, the frontage requirement for three lots is shy of the four hundred and fifty feet needed by two point five nine feet. That's at the street. Uh, keeping in mind that you also need to have, um, you have to carry that frontage to the minimum setback line. So the variance that was requested was not only for the two point five nine feet, but it was also for the, um, relief that was needed at the setback line, uh, which was, um, uh, one forty point two eight. So we needed, um, roughly a little under ten feet at the setback line. So, uh, so granting of the, of this waiver by the planning board, um, would allow for lot two to be buildable. Alternatively, um, a subdivision road can be constructed as shown on, uh, the attached plan. And so we prepared a plan that showed, um, a, a subdivision that would still accomplish the three lots, but it would require building a road, adding to infrastructure for the town. And, um, I don't know, can you bring that sketch, uh, plan up, the concept plan?
Hang on, I'm working on it.
Okay. While she's bringing that up, I would just say to you that it, the plan demonstrates it's feasible to do three conforming lots. Um, and, uh, and that would be without the frontage waiver, but the plan also shows that there would be more impact to the Taunton River as the homes would be closer to the two hundred foot riverfront area. And with the requested waiver of frontage, the three lots would be more regular in shape. The homes would front on South Street and a proposed easement will allow for public access to a parcel which would be along the Taunton River. So there's a public benefit to allowing for the, the frontage waiver. So, uh, that large parcel that you see shaded on the, on that three-lock configuration, uh, it becomes a benefit by not having to do a, do it as a subdivision. It becomes a, uh, an access, um, uh, air, an area for access to the Taunton River. And so the benefit of public access to the river is, is the primary justification for, uh, for granting of the waiver by the planning board. Um, so with regards to the, um, the nineteen ninety-eight South Street subdivision, we request the following waivers, um, that the, uh, under eighty-one R, that the waiver request is to waive, to request to waive strict compliance with the town of Bridgewater's rules and regulations, zoning bylaws, section eight point four oh, land space requirements for frontage of lot two and any other requirements needing relief. And, uh, then there was also, uh, requests for relief on the, uh, section four and section five, uh, which are outlined in that same letter. Um, but this is the, this is the show to the planning board. It is still feasible to do, uh, three lots with a subdivision road. Um, I did, uh, the lots don't become, um, as, as attractive. Um, they push the buildable area closer to the riverfront. And, um, and as you can see, one of them would actually be in the outer riparian zone. Um, so it's really not a real benefit, uh, to the, to, to the town, um, to do a subdivision in lieu of, uh, granting the waiver of frontage. And so that, if, for those reasons, um, we're requesting that the, uh, that the, that the planning board grant the waiver, which would be consistent with what the zoning board did in granting the variance, um, to allow for the three lots to be configured as shown on the plan. Uh, I will, uh, say that in, in closing, that, uh, there was a, a comment letter from the town engineer. He requested, uh, lot closure calculations. Um, we will be providing those to him. In doing so, um, we found that there was a minor, um, a minor, uh, discrepancy in a small segment between, uh, two of the lots, which instead of being forty-one, uh, twenty-three, it's forty-one sixteen. It's like hundreds. Um, yeah, but that will be, uh, shown on the plan that's presented for the My Lot at signing. And, uh, we will provide, uh, the town engineer for him to review, um, those lot closure documents to be sure that, um, he's in agreement that they do meet it before you guys endorse it. Uh, but that's, that's our request and we're asking that the, uh, the board grant the, uh, the waiver.
Do we have any board questions?
Now, I, I just, I'll just say that in this case, I think, uh, Harry made a, uh, very concise and cogent, uh, argument for a grain waiver that I've had before.
Mr. Silver, I, could you just confirm, because you said the subdivision layout on an eight and a half by eleven, so it's tough to see. Is that, does that roadway meet the requirements? Is, is that? Is that cul-de-sac a hundred and twenty-five feet or a hundred and thirty feet? And you don't need the drainage lot anyway, right? Like, because of two to four lot subdivision, you don't need a drainage parcel?
Right.
You're muted, Larry.
Larry, you're muted.
It is showing a hundred and twenty-five foot radius, so we'd be asking for, uh, relief from a full hundred and thirty in order to make that work.
If you remove the drainage lot, can you get one hundred and thirty?
If we remove the drainage lot, and then we'd be falling within your, um, your bylaw that allows for a lesser drainage on subdivisions of one to four lots.
Yeah, because you don't need the drainage lot in one to four lots, right?
Right, we wouldn't fall, we would fall in that category, which, but it still is, um, it's still, uh, they can provide the cul-de-sac.
So when you do your calculation, when you renew the calculation and you show the hundred and thirty and remove the drainage lot? Are you thinking? Are you muted, like?
He's muted, but I think he's also thinking.
Rebecca, would you like to chime in on this one?
Is the, is, is that, is the, is the, is the right of way forty feet with two twenty-foot radiuses? Is that compliant?
Yes, that's forty.
And that maintains forty feet through that?
That little, yes.
Yes.
But the cul-de-sac isn't what you require?
Uh, I was asleep that day. I was supposed to show one thirty, I'm sorry.
So again, could you?
I can correct the graphic, yes.
Any other, um, other, uh, more questions?
Public hearing.
So do we have any more comments? Or public comments? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
Anybody with their hand rings.
Am I unmuted? I'm not sure.
Yep, you are. Go ahead, sir.
Just need your name and address.
Sure, this is Scott Fletcher, two oh two five South Street. Um, our biggest concern, and I, I'm not sure, other butters who are on the call or not, but, um, our biggest concern with this project, um, has been drainage. Um, we have a major water issue on, on the north side of South Street. I mean, myself, uh, I know the Driscolls, I can speak maybe on their behalf, uh, as well as the Shaws. Um, or Gavin, I'm sorry, to, to the north of me. We, we're, we've got major water issues here. We've got water pooling up on either side of the properties. Um, it got worse after the new development came in just to the south bus. My sump pumps on constantly. Um, I know they did free up some relief, uh, when they did that southern division there and some water was allowed to come, I think, under South Street, uh, just in front of the Driscoll's house and come down along the south side of that lot two, I think it is. Um, we're just really concerned about water and I just, we're trying to understand how these houses are going to be built in such a way that we're not going to just make our situation worse. Um, and if, if it's not going to make our situation worse, I just don't see how these houses aren't going to be underwater. And that area down along the Taunton River is a swamp. Um, I would argue that there is no public benefit to having access to that area. Um, all that to say, I mean, in addition to that, I think somebody at the last meeting mentioned there was parking, um, ample parking at Sertimans Pond. I don't think that's true. There's a few spots there. It's a gravel, it's a gravel pit there. And if we're encouraging any parking along South Street for public access to the Taunton River, I think that's going to be hazardous more than anything. This is a, a tight road. Um, so just those two comments, um, really, I hope we can get some more information about drainage. I think it was mentioned last time that we, um, would bring that up at, with the building department. Um, and I'm not sure if that meeting has taken place and, uh, so, I mean, we can certainly save those conversations for that. That's what we need to do. Um, and I, I just want to make that, that comment about, I don't, I don't see a public benefit at all to having access to that area down there.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I apologize that I I. Almost forgot about public comment because I thought it was a Form A. I apologize. Any other public comment?
Sir, I'm having trouble getting in as I'm on my phone. Belinda Barrett, 2041 South Street. I just want to really. Echo what Mr. Fletcher was saying about the drainage issue that is already being experienced on the north side. And knowing that it the north side drains into the south side via a duct underneath the street. I I I along with Mr. Fletcher, we just don't see how that's. Not just a flood waiting to happen for any kind of structures over there. Or if it gets backed up onto the north side, it's going to be a flood on this side as well. And I wholeheartedly agree. There is no parking at Sertimans. You might get two cars over there. That's about it. And if you're going to open this up to the public, I don't think it's at all feasible. To park on the street. As Mr. Fletcher said, that you know, this is the alternate route for trucks. To get down to 18 because they can't pass over the bridge right there, right here on the corner of Green Street. So we have 18 wheelers up and down here constantly. Parking, especially if you wanted to incorporate families as as a family project. I think you're asking for trouble and and danger. I I think you're going to see problems with that.
Thank you, ma'am. So question for Mr. Tanzi and Mrs. DeBoer. If can you can you both hear me okay?
Yes.
So this is a subdivision. It's not a Form A. So even if we grant the waivers, there's certain things we could ask for. On the three lots facing South Street, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Like. Typically, when we have. When Mr. Antonero was acting as our consultant. If we had lots that concerned. You know, that had concerns regarding water issues, et cetera. We would ask for a grading plan. For those lots and it would be it has to and asphalt would have to be provided. To demonstrate that the grading plan was followed. To minimize to minimize water impacts on adjacent properties, et cetera. Based on the public feedback. That might be a way to handle this is that. Prior to our endorsement, Mr. Silver would provide a grading plan and maybe he already has a grading plan for each of these lots. And we would have the town engineer review those grading plans to make sure the water is shed in the proper directions. And an asphalt is required prior to an occupancy permit. Would that make sense in this case, Mr. Tanzi?
I believe so, yes. I think that's a good idea.
Mr. Silver, thoughts?
Yeah, I think that that's fine. We've already done some grading. I will say to you that. The concerns of water issues on the on the north side of South Street. Those elevations on the north side are. In excess of elevation 40. And on this side of the on the south side of South Street. The elevations start in the high 30s. And then they continue to drop down towards the river down to 34, 32. So everything is is shedding in a direction. Towards the river on these lots. So there's nothing from these lots. That are going to contribute to any kind of issue that these. Homeowners on the other side of South Street may be experiencing. What they're experiencing on the other side may be involved, may be related to. Developments that were adjacent to them on that side. But on this side, the grading would not be such that it. Would provide any kind of issue for them. Having said that, I think that reviewing the grading plan. Is would be fine as far as their requirement. Either before, I don't know at what stage. You want to see them, but we can provide it to the town engineer. So that he can see what's proposed because we've already done perk tests out there. We know where the septic's going. And we can provide. A a general grading scheme for each one of these house lots.
Mr. Tanzi, have you visited that section of South Street at all?
I have and. You know, the one question that I would have is. Have the septic systems been done? Will they be mounted systems? You know, and have they been approved? Because. I agree with what Mr. Silver is saying. The grade drops from South Street. Down towards the towards the river, so. The when it rains, the flow of runoff flows away from South Street and towards the towards the river. The only thing that. Might shed water. Towards South Street would be if. If if the septic systems had to be mounted. You know, there might be some runoff that would be directed towards South Street. But other than that, the way the grades are shown here, it looks to me like. The individual lots can be graded such that. All the runoff could be taken away from South Street. And and you know. Run over land flow down into the wetland and then into the river.
All right, but we'll we'll ask Mr. Silver to to send you the. The grading plans to confirm that and that can be a condition of approval if we decide to approve it, correct?
Correct. And but with that grading plan, I'd like it the grading to include. Whatever grading might be necessary for the septic design.
Are there any are there any measures that? Need to be addressed on South Street in terms of curbing or drainage or anything like that in front of this property?
I don't I don't. I didn't see anything that. Was was a red flag or anything like that. I don't. I don't think. The the carving would have any. Impact on on these lots.
I'm just talking I'm just talking about drainage from the the north side to the south side, so. But if we could, I think I think it's important to get those grading plans to look at those.
Yeah, I I agree.
Carlton with his hand raised.
Now, just before we get done, are there any are there any other board comments or questions?
Thank you very much. I hope everybody recognizes that that part of the Taunton River is tidal. And as sea level rises, which it is doing and will do and continue to do for a while. The level of the river is going to rise up beyond the current flood stages. So I just would like to make sure people recognize that that has a great potential. I don't know with the elevations. I can't read it on the screen. But a 10 foot rise of sea level will probably put those lots in dire straits, so. I just want to warn people that this could be a problem coming down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Any other public comments?
Hi, this is Scott Fletcher again, 2025 South Street. Am I?
Yeah, okay.
Just a couple of another quick things. I don't want to take too much time. In terms of drainage on South Street, there I think I mentioned there was a. A swale or something put in on adjacent to my property and and there's a reservoir and an under. The road pipe that comes out, I think, just on the northwest corner of the the first lot. And I just don't know if that's taken into consideration in this drawing because there currently is water flowing out over there. Second is I'm not sure when the perk test was done. I thought we heard in the last meeting it might have been in the summer, something like that. I I would love to see what the perk test says, maybe in March or something like that. And my my last comment is just that, you know, in terms of elevation of these houses. Currently, the currently they might be lower. I I just wonder after these houses are built, are they going to be elevated? I mean, we were told the same thing when the development went into the to the south of us. And you know, the that those new houses just adjacent to us are about seven, eight feet. Higher than ours and even they're getting water in their basement. So I mean. Are the houses really going to be built at, you know, in the high 38s? Are they going to be elevated into the 40s and shedding back onto the street?
So I think those are good comments and I think that's why it's important for us to see a grading plan for each lot. And then have town engineer review those to ensure that the. Drainage goes in the proper direction. Does the board agree with that? Or any other requests for for Mr. Silver?
I agree. That's what public comments for. So they've all both been very good comments. Drainage is important.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to know you also received an email from Eric Badger, the health agent on this one as well. All three lots were perk tested on March 11th, 2021. All three lots passed perk testing and were deemed buildable per CMR, 310 CMR, 15.000.
Okay. Mr. Silver, when do you think do you think you could have all the grading plans to us? In time for review by Mr. Tanzi and on in two weeks? Or do you think you'd like to the first week in February?
We have already done grading on. On the on the lots as far as what's going to be proposed there. If they they raise the grade, the question that was asked by the neighbor there. The the surface grade is maybe like elevation 39 there now. In some cases, it comes up to about 40 or so. So it doesn't really. It's not extremely raised system. There's a small bump where the septic systems are on the front yard. And then and then everything continues to drain towards the back. And that the goal would be is to have sort of walkouts if possible. In terms of designs. But they're not these are not designs that are coming way out of the ground. The if you see on that plan that you have on the screen. It shows the the mottling, which is the water table indicators. And just for Mr. Fletcher's benefit. That that groundwater designation is the same as if you did it now, if you did it in the middle of summer. Because those are indicators in the soil itself. So the results that you'd have for perk test now or at any other time would be the same. Maybe harder to do it. During a high water period, but the results will still be the same as far as what the outcome would be. So there's no no desire here to actually be shedding water back towards South Street. And we will take even greater care, knowing the comments, to make sure that whatever is in the front yard. Sways around the left and right side of the house towards the back so that we don't contribute. Water to the edge of South Street. And with regard to the. If you can see in the corner of that Lot 2 there. That is that shows that there is a swale. Taking that water that was talked about down the way that it currently does. But we're not interrupting that ability for the for the water to find its way towards the river. So we can have those plans. We can have those plans to the town engineer shortly. We do have a lot of stuff going on in the office. Yeah, I think it would be. Maybe it's better to go to that same meeting on February 2nd. To make sure that we have enough time to. For him to be able to review it and provide comments back. So it's not just about us getting it to him. We also got to give him enough time to be able to respond to it. So having said that, I think it might be better to do do this one also on February 2nd.
Okay, and you've got a meeting plan for each lot on the. Updated. Conceptual plan, so to speak, to the lot closure on the. Correct, I am. Good. Other public comment or board questions at this point, staff? All right, do we have a motion to continue to February 2nd?
Yes, February 2nd at 6:30.
I have one more. So we're talking about the way these three lots are now, about the concept that he proposed, correct? For grading. So we're under the assumption that that he would be granted a waiver. But we want to see the. Way he's going to grade them first, correct?
Correct. I mean, we have to prove it's in the public benefit. So we have the grading plan and that, you know, so. I think we need all the information to make a determination.
No, that's fine. I just want to make it clear. That's all.
No, you're right.
So then I'll make a motion to continue this till February 2nd, 6:30.
I'll second that.
By Mr. Geller, second by Mr. McDonald. Any discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
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 For Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So that hearing again is continued to February 2nd. If you're in a butter or a concerned person online, it won't be re- re notified. This is your notification this evening, February 2nd at 6:30. Thank you. Well, we have Mr. Silver and Mrs. Baptiste on the phone. The next item up is a public meeting. This is Plymouth and Whitman Streets. It's Bond Field, Inc. It's an A and R plan. Mr. Silver and Mrs. Baptiste?
I would have to say that Rebecca needs to do this one because I do not have anything with me. Related to this Form A.
Did you present this at the last meeting or did it didn't even come up on the agenda?
No, it never came up. We continued it.
So we have a plan of land on Plymouth and Whitman Street. We have already gone to zoning to allow a residential and a business.
Rebecca, do you have control of the screen?
Rebecca does, yes.
Could you?
Zooming in. Wait for it. Wait for it. There we go.
So as much as you can, I guess, to see that lot.
Oh, you want to see just this lot? All right, how's that?
Because that's the lot you're creating, correct?
That is, 4B is the lot we are creating. This this lot here already has a house built on it and I believe this one is still vacant. So this one would be a new residential lot. Again, we went to zoning board to get the use in the business B. We've gone to conservation. For a house that would be within the buffer zone. And so now we're at planning board to endorse a buildable lot. The lot would have town sewer, town water. And meet all the requirements for a residential C lot.
And so it's 125 feet of frontage and 185 square feet, so. And the the staff comment on this and I agree with it, it meets the. Requirements for endorsement?
Yes, it does.
So if there are no board questions or if there are board questions, ask them. If not, we could have a motion to approve the a motion to endorse the Form A.
Was that a motion to endorse, Mr. McDonald? You cut out, I'm sorry.
Ah, yep, that's correct, yep.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jimmy? Any discussion? Mrs. Grino?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Mamie, yes, okay. So I think that's it for. Mr. Silver, Mr. Bat- Mrs. Baptiste. So I think that's it for Mr. Silver and Mr. Bat, Mrs. Baptiste, correct?
Yes.
So we have a, um, South Farm Estates, we need to set the road bond and release the remaining lots.
Yes.
I believe there are two remaining lots, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we do have a lot from, uh, Mr. Tansy with a calculation.
Yep, um, I have, uh, if you give me one, I just was waiting. This is really small print. Let me just make it a little bigger before I share.
But I know we have the, I know we have the total amount here, the eighty-seven thousand, six sixty-two fifty. But there, there is a breakdown somewhere.
I have it right here. I'm showing you right now. Can you see that?
Oh, you know what? That was, that, that is my packet. Okay.
I thought I said, I thought I sent you the breakdown.
Yeah, it was, it was in the packet.
Okay, yeah. And, and Mr. Tansy's on the phone if you have any questions.
Sure work was done, what was acceptable and, um, come up with a bond calculation?
Uh, yes, that's, that's correct. I, um, made. Several, uh, site visits, uh, to the site. And, um. I also was furnished, um, an ASBIL plan. Um, like the Friday before, um, the, this, this estimate was due. And, um, there was some last minute work that was completed. So I adjusted this bond estimate and my numbers to come up with the, with the final, um, estimate. I also had a, um, a discussion with, um, Azu about one of the line items. One in particular was the, um, the electric line. Uh, the electric lines, uh, the conduits are installed. But they did not pull the, um, the cables through, through the, um. Uh, the, the, the electric lines. And so. I, um, I held money for the electric line until it's one hundred percent complete. And that's where I bought my. Um, total. And there's, there's also, if you notice, um. You know, there's a fifty percent contingency and I did not withhold, uh, ten thousand for future maintenance of the. Uh, drainage basins because this is a private street and those basins will be privately maintained.
Okay, do we have any, uh, board questions from Mr. Tansy on the, uh, bond calculation?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have a, he just, I just brought up a point. Since this is a private street. Uh, we're now withholding money for the, uh. Tension basins, cleaning them. What if this at some point, because how, how do we know that at some point this will not become public street?
Cause it's a, a New York four lot subdivision provision, it can't become a public street.
Right, and, 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 and Mr. Jimmy, and I hope we review, we, there should be a deed restriction on all those lots. That says it's a private road with the HOA agreement, correct?
Exactly, okay.
Yes, I believe that's correct, but it's also in your regulations that it's not built to town standard, so it will then be a public street.
Okay, thank you.
Before we sign the covenant release, can we confirm that the HOA for each full lot, each of the three or four lots is been filed? That's a, just a good thing to check on. Thanks for that comment, Mr. Jimmy. I think it was one of the conditions that had to be done before the lots were released anyway, correct?
That's correct, but I'll just confirm it. Mister, the developer, the developer has a question if, if, um.
So Mr. Bajenga, go ahead.
Hi, uh, good afternoon and good night. Um, so I guess my question is, we did submit a plan. My name is Manny Bajenga from six South Farm Lane. Um, so my question is. Two things, just to make the board aware that we did pay and we did give Mr. Tansy the, um. The, uh, fee for the electric line, which, which is fine. I mean, they can hold it until it's installed, we understand, but we did give him. I think it was a twenty-seven or twenty-nine thousand dollar payment. So basically, we're waiting on national grid to run the wire. But that has been paid with a copy of the check and the canceled check. Um, of, of the cash check that, that was issued to them. But just from my understanding, I was talking to Mr. Costco. We did submit an ASBIL, so that is the final ASBIL of the property, correct?
That's up to Mr. Tansy whether or not.
You don't have it in front of us. Was it a preliminary ASBIL or a final ASBIL?
No, it, it, it was a, a final ASBIL. And, um, I can see what. Um, Mr. Bajenga is, is getting at here. Um, the surveying and engineering. Uh, that this twelve thousand item, I had, he, he did supply a, um. An ASBIL plan, a final ASBIL plan. Um, it was late on a, on a Friday. And I, I made an adjustment on this twelve thousand dollar, um, figure. I, I reduced it down. Um, I didn't take it down to zero, but I think, I think it was fifteen hundred is what I left it at. Just for, for a contingency. And, uh, so I don't, I don't think this is. The, the latest, um, estimate that I came up with.
Can you blow that up, please? Can you enhance the image, please?
Yeah.
It's still, it still says twelve thousand under surveying and engineering.
Yeah, I, I, did you send me a newer version grade that I missed?
Uh, I, I believe I did.
Okay. So I apologize though. I've been, I've been out of the office. I'll have to double check.
So my question to the board is, Mr. Driscoll, is we get twelve thousand for survey and engineering. And then we have another twelve thousand for ASBIL survey and plan for sixty-five hundred. I can't really tell. So we had eighteen thousand dollars for basically the same job, but it's in two different line items. But it's achieving the same point. So it's like, almost like we're double dipping in the bond. Right below the little hand mark, you got ASBIL to survey and plan. Right there, yep. And then up top, you have survey and engineering, which is the ASBILs and the survey. So we're, we have eighteen thousand dollars. I can't tell if that's sixty-five hundred or six.
It's, it's sixty-five hundred.
Alright, so, so we have eighteen thousand five hundred dollars for basically the same item. And if this is the final, and I understand, and that's fine, if you guys want to place the bond with this, and then we'll just get it at a later meeting, that's fine. I'm not complaining, but I'm saying. That the same, that's the same line item, but we have it separated in two different spots, but we've already submitted it. So as long as we. Are on the same page that that should be released at the next meeting if we don't have this. Resolve, that's, that's fine. And as far as the electric, I'm fine as well. I mean, when you put it in, they put it in, and we'll just go for it to be released.
Mr. Tansy, are you saying that we should reduce the? The total eighty-seven thousand by ten five, take the twelve thousand, keep fifteen hundred for contingency and reduce the eighty-seven by ten five?
Um, ye- yes, I, the, the, the twelve thousand, you can reduce to, to fifteen hundred. And, um, wha- what was the, the other item, the sixty-five hundred? Yeah, we, we can, we can reduce that. I think I, I reduced it down to, um. So I, I think twenty-five hundred is what I, um. Left it at. Let, let me, I don't know if I can bring that up.
So we should be seven eight three one sixty-two fifty? Cause we want to take ten five off and then four thousand off?
Yes, but, yeah.
But then we have to take the fifty percent off the contingency as well. That's fine. I think it's just going to complicate things. I'll just post the bond as is if we don't have it, or if we want to do the calculations later. And then just get it released at the next lot, at the next meeting, if that makes it cleaner for everybody. Will that be easier?
I mean, it's, I mean, it's up to you. If, if somebody wants to do the quick calculation, that's fine, or we can. He can pose, you can vote this amount and he can either post it or he can wait for two weeks and. We can vote a new amount and you can post it, whatever you want.
It's, it's fourteen five times one point five, right? So it's twenty-one seven fifty, we can take off. So, so if we take twenty-one seven fifty off, right? That's ten five out of one engineering line item, right?
Yeah.
So it's ten point five. And minus four. And then seven two five zero out of contingency, right? Seven two five zero out of contingency. Four thousand out of one engineering line item, ten thousand out of another engineering line item, right?
Yeah.
So.
So what is the bottom underneath? I even have glasses on, this thing's so small, I can't see it. Eighty-seven sixty-two, right? And five oh?
Correct.
Yeah.
One, seven fifty, sixty-five eight seventy-two fifty?
Sixty-five eight seventy-two fifty.
Do some ten thousand out of one engineering, four thousand out of another engineering, and seven two five zero. Out of contingency.
Okay.
Is the board okay with that on the fly, bond calculations?
Um, yeah, this, Mr. Chairman, um. I, I'm calling up, this was the latest, uh, bond estimate. And it had a date of December twenty-ninth. And what, and, and just, just for, for the record, um. What I, what I left was for the electric. The line item was, uh, twenty-eight thousand and fifty dollars. The, um. The survey and engineering. Um, I, I reduced to zero. And then the ASBIL plan I left at fifteen hundred. And I got a, a total with the fifty percent contingency of sixty-two thousand. One hundred twenty-two and fifty cents.
Okay, so sixty-two one twenty-two fifty?
Correct.
Any board discussion? Do we want to make a motion to accept that as bond?
I'll make a motion to accept that as the bond, fifty-two thousand, one hundred twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Just because you broke up, Mr. Geller, you said sixty-two, one, two, two, fifty?
Correct.
Good, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And Mr. McDonald? Any discussion? The only thing I'd ask is, Mr. Tansy, could you email that over to the board and to Mr., uh, to Mr. Debo Graham as soon as possible? Record of us for the meeting?
Yes.
Any discussion? I'll take the roll call.
I'm sorry, wait, is that to set the bond and release the remaining two lots? Or are you going to do that separate, a separate vote?
We'll do a separate vote for that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay, so what lots are we looking to release? There's three lots. Do they have lot numbers? Or are we just saying we release the remaining two?
I don't have the lot numbers, so I would, it's only two. He's already had one release because he's building on it, so I would release the remaining two.
Okay, so do we have a motion to release the remaining two lots from covenant?
So moved.
McDonald, do the second? Second by Mr. Geller and Mrs. Greeno. Who wants it?
I already wrote gene down.
Alright, I got it.
Any discussion? So the only condition I'd say I'd like on the lot release is that, uh, to Mr. Jimmy's point, we confirm that the. Road is taken care of in perpetuity as a private road. And there has been an HOA. Uh, filed. I, I believe, if I recall, um, Mrs. Farinacci already did this work and emailed the board.
I think so. In fact, I can, let me pull up the file right now.
Oh, it's out of the deed recordings, but if we could just confirm that and email that to the board again. Um, before we sign the, the lot release, just to make sure that the road is going to be properly maintained.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll start the, the roll. Mr. Geller?
Yep.
Uh, Mrs. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
I'm yes, okay. And the next item we have on the agenda is Trinity Circle. Again, this is Mr. Bajenga. It's the release of the remaining bond. Um, if you recall, there was some work to be done at the intersection of the road. I believe Mr. Tansy and I read it, provided us a, um, summary of the, the work that was done there. Um, and he recommends.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now.
A release of the remaining bond. Is that correct, Mr. Tansy?
Uh, that's correct.
I just pulled up his report.
Do you enhance that a little bit?
You need better glasses, Pat. Can you see that?
Yep.
So on this one, are we not holding any drainage maintenance?
I believe this is a private room as well. Is it not?
I think that was one of the conditions of approval, but I don't, is, is it? Was there, was there an HOA, Mr. Bajenga, was there an HOA established to maintain the road?
Yes, there is.
There is? And that was, that, that was recorded with all the lots as well?
Yes. There's actually an HOA, the, I mean, the houses are all built, they're all paying into an HOA. This was actually. The first snowstorm that they're going to have, that they actually hired an outside person that I'm not maintaining it.
Okay, you know, again, with this, I'm okay, you know, maybe we should just confirm before we release the entire bond that. I'll make it just a condition, um, Mrs. DeBoeran, that we confirm that the, all the lots are properly recorded. To make sure.
On this, I believe on this one, we have already received that. I, I think I saw it somewhere in the files that I can.
I did, I just want to make sure we don't give up the ten thousand dollars and then it wasn't properly reported and, and whatnot for the drainage maintenance.
There's actually five on this one.
But, okay.
Do you want to release, um, everything but that five until we confirm, or do you want to wait on the whole thing?
What doubts on that? Do we want to hold the drainage, uh? Maintenance? Five thousand or is it ten? I don't know what it is on that bond, whatever it is on the, on that bond. We went from five to ten at one point.
Right, but I think this was before we went to ten, so I think it is a five thousand.
Okay. I, I think I'd be most comfortable with releasing, I believe, but five until we confirm that everything's been properly recorded. To make sure that that road is. Any other board questions or comments?
Yes, I actually do have a comment, Mr. Driscoll.
Sure.
Un, unrelated to the, to the whole matter, I just wanted to say that I do complain about. Unrelated to the, to the whole matter, I just wanted to say that I do complain about. Uh, you know, when stuff doesn't go as accordingly or in a timely fashion, but I, I will say that Mr. Greg Tansy, not to brown nose, but. Has done an excellent job, has responded to all my phone calls, has done several inspections, has been prompt. And, uh, as a developer, has cost me less money of, uh, waiting for. You know, just, uh, you know, just responding to a phone call. So as a board, you guys have an excellent. And visual underneath you responding to. That's all.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bajenga. Any other board comments? Would be okay with release? What is the total amount right now for that, in that account?
Uh, we're holding fifty thousand, five hundred and six dollars.
So we want a motion to receive, we are. Release forty-five thousand, five hundred and.
Six.
Six. Does anybody have any comments? Agree, disagree, have a motion?
So does that get held till the next meeting? Is that, or is it just till you get the paperwork in front of you?
I, I think we just want to confirm that everything's been properly recorded on that neighborhood to make sure it is maintained. And it won't fall back on the town.
I understand, but I'm just saying, is that just Jennifer getting the recorded?
Because I think they'll need, if they don't vote to release that contingent upon, then they'll need to take a separate vote, so.
I think, I think the best thing to do is have, have, um, staff provide that to Mr. Tansy and to the board so we can review it. And once it's been okay, then we can tell you to ask for the remaining five thousand, I guess.
Okay, fair enough.
So do we have any motion from the board?
Moved, I'll make a motion to release forty-five thousand, five hundred and six dollars. For the bond and the other five, once we.
Yeah, we'll, so just for clarification, we'll revisit the other five once we've done our.
Yep, so you're just releasing forty-five thousand, five hundred and six dollars.
Yep.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
No, me yes. Um, minutes to be approved. To be honest with you, I didn't get a chance to read them, despite too much going on the last couple of days, but.
Well, I'm happy to hold it on if you want, or if anybody else would want.
Do we might hold any minutes for the next meeting, if that's okay?
Five would be.
Any board director reports at this point?
Not at this time.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Jimmy, do the second?
A second.
Where was the Geller? Uh, McDonald?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we, um. Mrs. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy? No, me yes. Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
You, good night.